Present.
All present.
additions, deletions to the work session agenda?
Mr. McGinnity, I did, on January 31st, after we received an email regarding position budget changes, I did ask you to add an item to the work session to discuss the position budget changes. There was one sent on January 14th and one sent on January 31st.
Yeah.
Just to discuss them as budget amendments because it is a position budget.
Well, when I got your email, which I did receive, and I think you indicated you may be writing a...
I said if it's necessary to get the manager to refer to it as a position budget instead of a position list, if it's necessary to pass a resolution.
So I thought maybe that should go to the legislative committee.
Okay.
And then that could come forward and we could bring it to a work session.
Okay.
So if we... Who's the Chair of the Legislative?
Mr. Haas. Yes, sir.
Can you put that on your agenda, please?
Okay.
And then we will have, once you meet and send it forward, we'll have it on the work session. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure. Discuss the division reports, Mr. Pedry. Oh, excuse me, adoption of the agenda.
So, more.
Okay, Ms. Wakey, and Sageman, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? Extinction unheard? Okay, Mr. Pedry?
Well, I just spoke for probably too long to anybody but my mother, so if...
I don't know about your mother.
So, if anybody has any que... Here's the division reports. Obviously, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Well, I don't have a question, but I have a... Oh, it's so wonderful to report that. No, I don't... You know how I like to talk about bridges, especially? Blytheburn Road is closed because, you know why? Because bridge rehabilitation is starting. Thank you very much, Eddie, and anyone who's, you know, who's... Thank you very much. By the way, for the roads, I'm going to give you a shout out. And anyone who's responsible for cold patching on Blytheburn Road, thank you very much. One of the county roads.
They've been out working, our road and bridge crew, Wayne Mitchell and his crew. Now, obviously, our road and bridge crew is extremely dwindled with the number of workers that we have, but they have been out on weekends and getting out there across the county.
And there appears to be a... I don't know if something needs to be cleaned out. Water is pooling on a section of Blytheburn. It's freezing over. I think Wright Township probably, I don't know if they talked to Eddie or they called about it, because it's in the, I believe it's in the Wright Township section of Blytheburn. At any rate, if someone could check on that situation, because that's our road. And what happens is, there appears to be a drain that's blocked. I call it a drain. I don't know what the technical term is. And when, and when the water, when the snow melts and it refreezes, it creates a road hazard, you know, in one lane. So I'm just pointing that out, but I'm sure you all know about it. And my other shout out and thank you is the bridge on Bridge Road in Hollandback Township. One of my grandsons reports to me that construction has begun. He's very happy because that road leads to one of his best friend's homes. So thank you very much. I know I've been talking about roads and bridges, but you're all very responsive, and I thank you very much.
If you, we're going to be putting up a report on the county website of roads and bridges in 2019, the roads that we're hoping to get done, and obviously the bridges that we're hoping to get done as well. There's the Act 13 monies that we've been, that we've been holding on to that we can utilize this year, as well as those others projects. You know, the big projects are going to be Chase Road, Foothills, all the way through. Those will be the big projects in 2019, but we're going to, you know, stretch our dollars as far as we could.
And I love the photographs today in your report, and I hope, I haven't checked out the website. Maybe they're on the website as well.
We're going to put as many of those before and afters. Eddie and I have talked about a lot of our public relations regard to our road and bridge crew. 128 miles of road and 300 bridges keeps them busy.
Wonderful. And I will be going to those two bridges to, you know, just photograph them myself because they're wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else on the division reports? I thought Mr. Pedry did a good job to include that in your state of the county, and I appreciate the information on the audit, because obviously that's an ongoing topic that we've been discussing, and it's important that we keep a focus on that as we move forward with the audit schedule for this year.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And kudos to the county manager for listing conferences attended during month of January. That's a real nice addition to the report.
Yep. I think that's a very positive addition.
Real good.
Very good. Okay, moving down to number two, we have someone here to speak to us in regards to the proposed ordinance, amending the zoning.
From our planning and zoning department, Mr. Jim Weber.
Mr. Weber.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This proposed rezoning is a parcel of land right along State Route 239 in Union Township. It's immediately adjacent to highway business-owned properties on both sides of the highway. This 0.7 acre parcel fronts right on the road, and it's not really suitable for anything other than commercial use. And the owner of the property is requesting it to be rezoned from conservation to highway business to be consistent with all of the other roads. If you will, that's almost, you can look at Union Township and say, this little strip of land along 239 till you get to the bridge that goes across the creek there is their business district, and it doesn't make any sense to have this piece of land that really can't be used for conservation. It's actually undersized according to our ordinance for the district to begin with, so it's a non-conforming lot. It makes sense to rezone it to be consistent with everybody else in that part of the township. And that's the purpose of this particular rezoning application.
And all the procedures were followed as far as advertising?
Yes, we held the Planning Commission public hearing and had public comment there. The commission did vote to recommend approval to this council.
Okay.
And all of the proper procedures have been done at this point in time. So depending upon what council wants to do, we'll just, the next publications will be for advertising the public hearing that you all will hold before you have your voting session on the proposed ordinance.
And what's the timeframe? Do you have to have seven days?
According to Act 247 in our zoning ordinance, we have to publish two consecutive weeks with a minimum of seven days, maximum of 30 on the first one, so we would need two weeks, two consecutive weeks to publish to meet the zoning ordinance requirements in Act 247.
So we would not be able to do it for next county council meeting?
No, we would not. We would have to be...
As a cancellation, we would only have a week's time.
That's correct. We wouldn't be able to get the second ad in.
So we'd be looking forward to March?
Probably, yes.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Weber?
Yeah, I have a question. Did I hear you correctly when you said that Harry and Alice Walewski, they own the property?
That's correct.
Do they, are they operating a business near the property?
They own several other properties immediately adjacent on that same side of the highway as you head towards Shickshane Borough.
Yes.
And they do operate businesses along there. They like to operate a business in this parcel as well.
So they, so it's not a matter of just expansion, it's building a new, maybe, commercial structure? Is that what they're...
I'm not sure it'd be that kind of an investment, but it would, it would at least allow the property to have some use that would make sense.
Understood.
Right now, the property isn't even really usable for residents.
Yes. It's too small.
Right.
Is there a minimum, I'm just curious, in what township is this?
It's Union Township.
Union. Is there a minimum acreage required for residences, do you know, in Union?
Well, in conservation, they follow our ordinance.
Oh, it's conservation, I'm sorry.
Conservation District is a minimum two acre.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Questions for Mr. Weber?
Senator Weber, thanks for coming. Township supervisors on Union Township, were they supporting of this as well, or did they not?
They took, they took no position. They were notified of all of the hearings. We always notify the municipality that any kind of hearing involves, and so they were notified. They did not make any comment one way or another.
And there was no other opposition from?
There was no opposition at the commission.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Weber.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Pedry? Number three.
I didn't ask for us to be on the agenda, so...
No, I put it on the agenda because Ms. Howke sent me an email and requested that, and you're the person who's responsible for the merit evaluation process for employees.
Okay, sure. The Luzerne County Administration has completed its second merit evaluation process in 2018. We did, the first one in 2018, the second one in 2019. I want to thank county council for their support of these merit raises for those individuals. These individuals, as well aware, went seven years without raises. Their hours were increased from 32 and a half to 37 and a half without any compensation. They did not have a raise in 2017, and we are now in the process of establishing the merit review process. These merit raises were provided based upon those evaluations. Those are very difficult conversations you have to have with employees. And you tell those employees what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, their goals, and where we're going from, where we're going forward with their positions. That process has now been implemented by our HR department and has been solidified by our department heads. County Council in 2018 allocated a line item for those increases in the budget. We came in under budget for that line item for those raises. And if there are any openings or people on council want to see a change to that process, if a majority of those county council members want to see that, we can do that in the budget process for 2020.
Mr. Haas.
I think it's very commendable that you instituted the evaluation process, and I don't think that anybody was opposed to the idea of people getting a raise. I'm only speaking for myself. I guess I shouldn't say about anybody else, but I don't think that the issue of getting a raise is quite the issue. The issue is the fact that the money that was allocated was treated as a pot of money and then allocated independently of the idea that council had said there was a 2% allocation. And so I don't know how anybody else understood what we were voting on, but we all approved a 2% raise for employees. My understanding of it was that 2% would be the maximum, and that was why we allocated 2% for the clerk's, clerk of council salary. And that was what I understood. We didn't tie that down in all kinds of legal terminology, but that was my understanding of what was going to happen here. And to find out that it was treated as a pot of money, and then just because it came in, you know, $22,000 under the maximum amount that was allocated, just seems to me, having found a little loophole in there and use that loophole. I think that our employees do a wonderful job, and I am well aware that when we took over in 2012, many of them had gone for many years without a raise. This is not to say that, you know, they don't deserve 2.5%, 3% more than that, but the point is that we have a fiscal responsibility, and we allocated 2% raises. My understanding was one thing, the manager took it and went a different way with it. I'd like to hear what other council members have to say.
Well, first of all, I made the motion.
Right.
And I made the motion last year also in the budget process. And my idea behind it, and I think I expressed that in 18, I thought I expressed it for 19 budget, but maybe I didn't clarify it well enough, was that there would be a pot of money that was 2% that would be placed in the budget in the appropriate departments or divisions, so that in 2018, when I made the motion, it was part, be subject to the merit evaluation. And last year, if you remember, it was the same 2%, but if you remember, the distribution of the raises went as high as 6%.
Mm-hmm.
The manager this year, several times, I remember distinctly saying to us that he would not go above 3%. He said that several times, even though it was a 2% as far as the amount of money available. When he did the evaluation process, no one received more than 3%. So I felt it was clearly understood that, yes, there's a potential for some people through the evaluation process to receive up to 3%.
Okay, I do recall the manager talking about 3%, but he also asked for 3% in his original budget.
Yes, and we reduced it to 2%.
Right. I don't remember that being said after we had finalized the budget, so maybe I missed that.
I thought that was clear, but maybe I didn't make it clear enough.
My perspective is this, nobody's trying to pull anything over on anybody, but we need to clarify that. I won't be wanting to clarify it next year, but that needs to be clarified and make clear that what both sides understand it to be, so that we're on the same page, and eliminate that in the future.
And that has been my statement since then, when I've, maybe the papers have asked me, some other people, I've said that I feel that there will be more clarification going forward in the budget process, and we'll welcome any of that.
I mean, we do merit evaluations of every employee, or we do evaluations of every employee. That was in your state of the...
No, that's not true. That's not true. We do merit evaluations of non-represented employees.
But, no, you do evaluations of every employee.
I do, we do evaluations.
And you don't do merit raises in, you know, you have contractual raises.
Contractual raises.
For representing employees.
Correct.
But my point is that if you have an employee in a bargaining unit and you've bargained a 3% raise, do you then say, well, this person, based on their evaluation, you know, I could give this person a 4% raise, and I could give somebody else a 3% raise, but because there are vacant positions, or there are people who aren't, haven't been here long enough to get a raise, you wouldn't raise, you wouldn't give someone more in a bargaining unit? That's where it's been contractually agreed that the raise is 3%.
Yeah, I sincerely doubt that a collective bargaining unit would allow me to do that because I would also say that if people aren't doing their job, they would get less than 3%.
Well, I understand that. I understand that, but my point is that, you know, and maybe it was just my misunderstanding of it, that I thought that we were saying that we were allocating up to a 2% raise, and, you know...
That wasn't my understanding of it as well. I do believe that maybe as we move forward this process, let's clarify that. I appreciate county council supporting this. I know it's a difficult decision every year. This is only the second year we've done it. I followed the same protocol I did for last year. Obviously, I cut it down a little more from 6 to 3%. I told county council I was going to do that. We came in under budget for this year, and I think we'll continue to work at it for next year, and, you know, hopefully this will be a standard conversation we have.
Well, I tell, I don't think it was terribly difficult this year for this particular item, because I remember those days where our employees went seven years without a raise, and that was, that was not appropriate. And it sows discord amongst the ranks, but at the same time, I don't want to depend on them to go in the other direction, say, okay, well, now we're going to go this far, and other employees that don't get, especially our, those who don't receive the award or those who are unionized, I think that could also cause problems if you're looking at county morale, you know, Mr. Manager, too. And again, it just comes down, I think we can clarify this right now. I mean, if manager asks for a 2% maximum increase for raises, that's what we set. You know, the council sets, has the purse strings, and I really think it's either one or the other. It's not like it's a grand discussion we need to have. It's like, okay, well, if council allocates 2%, well, the next year can 4% raises go out? I mean, where do you draw the line? Well, we draw the line. The council draws the line with the budget. And, you know, again, this has nothing to do with our employees, but it's just the process, and I think if we really, we've had the manager's report here, we want to move forward with financial stipulation processes. The process has got to be what the council says is what's followed through on. You know, I hate to go back to that position that was at mid-year, but the council said no to that. So I just hope for this year going forward, though, we really see the yeses mean yes and the no means no.
Mr. Haas, in my opinion, we did follow through with what the council said. Council said $198,000 there within this budget, and we did. We're underneath that budget. And, you know, we created that position last year. Council said no on that position. Council removed that position from the budget. In January 2nd, I could have recreated that position if I so chose. I am not doing that. So I'm, I heard you loud and clear on that as well.
Yeah.
And that we're not going to, we're not going to do that. I think there's two separate forms, two areas of government. I think you and I could disagree on the actual allocation of the funds and how they should be distributed, whether or not I have the authority to provide raises, or whether the council has the authority to provide raises, but in my opinion, council allocated money, we live within that budget, we continue to work with it. I think it needs to be maybe a little more clarified, some more conversation as we move forward, but I just think that it's a good process, and I would say this. I've seen some great changes from our, from our non-represented employees who last year didn't get the highest raise, and then this year stepped up and then did receive a larger monetary raise. I use it as an encouragement. I use it as a motivator. I don't believe that if you just show up to work, you should get a raise, and I think that these raises are for the individuals who have proven themselves from them. And, you know, I think as we continue to move process, we'll continually work with our department heads, our division heads as we move forward.
Yeah. And that's purview, that's your purview, and I totally respect that to the utmost. And, you know, a lot of people say they want the county, they want government in general run more like a business. Well, yeah, this is certainly a step in that direction, it certainly is. But at the same time, we just want to make sure we're accurately fulfilling our tasks in order to the taxpayers. And I even understand the $22,000 savings in that line item. That's wonderful, always wonderful news, but again, we want to make sure it's egalitarian, fair across the board.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo...
Yes. Mr. Urban, and then Ms. Sageman, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
Mr. McGinnity.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we allocated a million dollars from reserve fund to the county general fund during the budget process. That's correct?
Actually, what we did, Mr. Urban, was leave a million dollars in the 2018 budget. We didn't...
Right, right. We actually left a million dollars in there, right?
That was correct. We left a million dollars to make sure that there wouldn't be any unknowns.
The manager said, yeah, the manager said tonight we're going to have about a $500,000 reserve fund.
Well, that's, that's an early estimate, undocumented at this point.
Right. I guess my concern is, where'd the other $500,000 go? And, you know, had we not allocated that money in the budget, we'd be in hole right now, $500,000, or more.
Well, I think that's an audit question, and once the auditors get here and review the books, I think they'll have a more clear information for us.
All right.
All right?
Obviously, the $500,000...
I understand Mr. Pedry's issue with the pay raises. I mean, I'm always under the assumption, you know, you give him a pot of money, he's going to spend it the way he feels fit, and that, I agree with you, last year they did, he did give 6% raises out, so I think if other members of council want to limit that pot, then they should do so.
Right.
And he won't be able to give out as much as he does, or he'll have to give it out to fewer people if he chooses to give over what he said he was going to give them. On the other hand, if he says any indication that's the max I'm going to give, and maybe that's the word he's got to use in the future, the max I'm going to give someone is a 2% raise, then we can hold him to that, to his word.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Sageman?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think I was going to echo what Mr. Keller said, is that I don't think anybody was trying to play anything or do anything that was sneaky. I think it was just truly, it wasn't clear. And then I agree with Mr. Urban, then we have to make it much clearer going forward. Either it's a pot of money, or the pot of money only reflects what, if you gave everybody a 2% raise, what that would be, you know, that's all, that's the, the clarification has to be there for next year.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah, because ultimately, if the manager says, all right, I want a deputy manager, there's extra money over there, well, bam, we suddenly hocus pocus have a new deputy manager. If you follow that logic with there's just extra money to do as the management pleases, so...
Then our next step would be, Mr. Haas, I think in the next, you were seeing probably a change there.
Or you could approve a deputy county manager as well. That's also fine.
That's what I said, you'll see a change.
I mean, are you saying that, Harry? I mean, I'll create one, I'll create one.
Shazam.
Anyone else in regards to merit raises? Okay, public comment? Mr. Scheiner, please.
Yes, I had the same confusion this year as I did last year over this issue. When the raises came out in 2018, and they ranged as high as 6%, I questioned at a public meeting what happened there and how, I thought that the limit was supposed to be what was asked for, which I believe was 3% for 17 going into 18.
That was what was requested.
Right.
Not what was provided for in the budget.
Now, this year, again, 2% overall is what was allotted.
Correct.
But yet, raises went higher. And the confusion is that when you allow this percentage, people feel that is the percentage, the maximum percentage someone's going to receive. That's not what's happening. I think the way to get around this is for council to, by resolution, determine the maximum percentage an individual's pay rate can go up. After that is set, let the manager do the reviews prior to the end of the year, the way most companies do, and then come to you with the dollar amount requested for the following year needed for these raises. I don't think it necessarily has to be reflected at that point in the position budget for the following year, because that would basically grant its only positions, not people's names, but let's face it, it comes down to, everybody would know who's getting the raise in advance based on many of the items in the position budget. But you need to get some clarification on this and have a standard for putting this through, so that there is no confusion, there is no dilemma. We're not having people getting significantly higher raises than others. But I think that's all up to council to set that by resolution and then go from there with the dollar amount. Even if the manager wanted to do the evaluations during the budget process, if that was more convenient for him and his staff, he could give you a dollar amount in the beginning of the budget proposal in October, but then refine that down when the dollar amount that was actually needed was determined, and then amend the budget for the year just as you do before the final passage. My other, my question, though, is in reference to what Ms. Howke asked for, and it was referred to the legislative committee. I could not understand what was being said. What is being referred to the legislative committee?
Ms. Howke, you want to...
Well, I had requested an item on the work session to talk about the position changes. We received notice of creation or...
Any changes in the position?
You know, changes to the position, to the position budget. And so we received notice of two, two notices of some position changes in January, and I asked to have those as a topic of discussion so that we could talk about them as budget amendments, because it's a position budget, and also the fact that we need to have the position budget referred to as a position budget rather than a position list.
So what is being referred to the legislative committee, then?
That request.
The request to make it a budget instead of a list?
No. No. The request in regards to position changes.
To amend, to amend the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then they'll come forward to a work session, you know, after Mr. Haas has that information, so he'll have it on his agenda with his committee, and then come to a work session, we'll go from there. Okay?
I would like to say, you know, I appreciate that, and I think any of these changes, as the manager sends them to council, should be brought up at a public meeting for some discussion, so we don't end up in a situation like we did last year with having to terminate an employee just because it wasn't budgeted. Doesn't look good. It's not fair. And I think that would solve that, so that if anything like that should come forward and it's discussed, it can be handled there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think everybody's in agreement that we need more clarification in regards to the merit raises, so we will make sure that that be a topic that we'll discuss prior to probably including the budget process, and hopefully we'll get some language together that everyone's satisfied with. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Sney.
One item before we close.
Well, there's our public comment, I just had to talk about...
Sure. Let him go.
Mr. Sney first, and then you...
I'll pass.
You'll pass him. Mr. Urban, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. McGinnity, I read an article last week in Times Media with an article, you know, giving a recap of a meeting at the Welling Valley Sanitary Authority. At that meeting, the consultant, I guess, said that they asked the county if they wanted to take the stormwater fee, and I guess Mr. Pedri responded and said that no one ever asked them. But tonight, we found out that the county, that the sanitary authorities did ask the county for things, they asked them for maps of properties, I guess, in the county.
Well, I don't know if they asked for the maps. Did they ask for the maps?
I don't know.
We're unclear about that, Mr. Urban, but we'll find an answer for you.
All right, I'd like to get that clarification. The other thing is with that stormwater fee, can the county legislature put together what's called the Freedom of Information Act request and send it to the Department of E.P., EPA, I should say, and ask the EPA specifically, what are the requirements for Luzerne County? What stormwater requirements does the county have to meet? When I look at the fee that's being charged, you know, I mean, we see in articles that they talk about dirty water, or that it rains, the river's dirty, well, the river just doesn't become dirty in Luzerne County. I mean, if you stand up the Luzerne-Lacawatt County line, it's dirty when it gets to Luzerne County. And I think it's totally unfair for Luzerne County taxpayers, particularly the 32 municipalities under the Welling Valley Sanitary, to pay the bill to everyone else that lives along the river, upstream of the river, and the millions of gallons of raw dirt are dumped into the river by Binghamton, you know, and it comes down our way, you know, what are we doing about that? Maybe we should take some legal action against Binghamton and recruit some money. So I'd like the manager to consider that in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sne?
On a happier note, I'd just like to congratulate, on January 22nd here, looks for General Nurses came here.
Yes.
And I'd just like to congratulate them on their contract. It's a victory for labor, especially in their vocation, again, when they're putting themselves on the line 24 hours a day, seven days a week. State requirements say that they're adequately staffed. I totally disagree. If you go in any hospital in Pennsylvania, I was never outside the state in a hospital, but I'll tell you, in Pennsylvania, they're drastically understaffed, and nobody deserved more of a contract than these people. And I know Mr. Padavant and the steelworkers were there marching all the time, and a little message, we're not going away. You're not taking us down. Congratulations to the nurses. Well deserved.
And I want to echo, I'm glad Mr. Sne brought that up, because I was also going to bring that up, and I would think, I would hope that in a small way, our discussion that night may have brought the two sides a little closer together, or perhaps the administration who negotiates for the hospital, maybe we gave them a little bit of something to think about that night because the nurses were here. I want to say something else, too, unrelated to the nurses, if I can.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to really, once again, thank all of the candidates to fill the vacancy of Mr. Brominsky, all of them who came forward to be interviewed. They were all excellent candidates, and it took a lot of courage to come before council, I think, well, to come publicly and answer questions before the public, and I just want to thank them once again for putting themselves out there. We all know what a tough job this is, and the fact that all of those people were willing to do the job makes me very proud of, you know, our service to the county.
Very good. Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Howke, do you have a second?
Yes. Second.
Second, Mr. Urban, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
I thought you was asked to read.
It's going to be a very lengthy minute.
Monday or Friday morning, looks good for me, I don't know what-